I'm going to open the study session, work session, Tuesday, January 7, 2014. Could you have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Roth.
Here.
Commissioner Mum.
Here.
Commissioner Polly.
Here.
And Mayor Neely.
Here. Any future agenda items anybody wants to bring up at this point?
I just want to kind of discuss at this level, I don't know if it needs to be a discussion item or not, but it looks like the CIC last night was looking for some education on the charter. I don't know if that's something that we can provide for them, or if they're not interested, or what that might look like. Mayor, you were there last night.
Yeah, I think the ideas that were expressed, and maybe somebody might want to comment on it, we could entertain an item, was whether the CIC could in fact be an entity that looks at the charter review, and that was brought up last night. I think it was a bit more specific than that. I surely think that there should be a group of citizens that do get involved, and what the mechanism might be.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Needs to be a wide group of citizens.
We're going to be discussing our goals at our retreat, and one of our goals is, of course, the charter review.
Yeah.
So maybe we can have that as part of the review discussion at our goal setting.
Sounds good.
That's great.
And just so you know, Mayor, we're going to have a sort of an open-mic situation at the end of our presentations on the updates.
Oh, you are? Okay.
And so you guys can kind of...
That would be perfect. It doesn't need to be a work session.
There's almost not a limit on what you want to talk about there, so.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be a work session.
Okay, very good. Anything else, then?
Well, I wanted to find out about fees. You know how we have park fees, and we have fees for public records and that kind of thing? Are we increasing those like 3% every year, Mr. Frazier? Because, you know, I don't want us to fall behind on things, because all of our costs go up.
Most of our fees... Yeah, most of our fees automatically increase, I believe, on the fiscal year.
Okay.
But, yeah, I can check and see exactly which ones and on what schedule, but we've been trying to consolidate those all so that they always automatically increase with inflation.
Okay, okay.
So that we don't get behind in recovering costs of our operations.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Those were my only two ideas.
Any more items for discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to our formal discussion items here for the TriMet Current and Future Transit Service in Oregon City, and we have our Public Works Director, John Lewis, is going to start us off.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate you taking the time to take this topic. We've got General Manager from TriMet, Neil McFarlane, and Steve Kautz just walked in. If you don't mind coming up here, we'll get started and go through that. We don't have a presentation, but they have, they're going to speak directly to the City Commission about some of the services that TriMet is currently providing. Steve, can I hand some things out? As well as some things that, with regard to past service cuts and kind of how that has played out, and some future plans for, about what TriMet is thinking about with regard to the southeast corridor, if you will, and some of the things associated with the new MAX line that comes into Milwaukee. So, Neil, if you want to take it from here, I'll hand off these.
Good to see you again.
Should I hand these out now, or do you want to...
Sure.
I think it'd be fine. Mayor Neely, members of the Commission, thank you for the opportunity to address you and to bring you up to date on all things TriMet. And it's very timely, because we are beginning what we call our Southeast Service Enhancement Plan, and that's also tied with the service planning that's going to be part of the opening service associated with the Portland-Milwaukee Light Rail Project, which opens on September 12, 2015. Before I do that, I wanted to just give you a very sort of general status report on TriMet, and some of where we stand as an agency right now. And frankly, the news is positive. We are beginning to pull ourselves out of the clutches of the Great Recession, and that's a very positive thing for an agency that relies for 52% of its revenue on a payroll tax, which is really dependent on the level of employment within the region. So we're seeing, obviously, more positive trends associated with that, although it's still very interesting to note that even today, we have fewer jobs in this region than we had before the Great Recession. So we're seeing great growth in jobs, but it just begins to demonstrate how long it's taken, not only this region, but the country, to really pull out of the recession that we had. And because of that, we are able to begin to invest in some new service, and I wanted to give you a little window into that. In 2013, about a third of our bus lines actually saw some improvements in service, some added service, and that included the McLaughlin Line 33. And March 1 of this year, we actually are beginning what we call the restoration of some of our frequent service, and in particular, that's the service that occurred on our 12 very heavily-used lines. The 33-McLaughlin is one of those. Those 12 lines on our system account for 58% of our bus riders overall. And what we're able to do with those 12 lines is now begin to add back service so that we can have 15-minute service or better, now from the beginning of the morning peak hour to the end of the evening peak hour. We're hoping, in the future years, to begin to do even more than that, and begin to extend that into the evenings, because that's important to many of our customers, and also weekends as well. But we're on our way to beginning to restore some of that really important service that was really key for our riders. I'd also note that one of the things, and I'm sure the City Commission faces this as well, which is during the Great Recession, had a hard time keeping up with the capital requirements of all our needs, and we have been able to begin to make some steps in that regard. So, for example, in 2012, we added 50 new buses to our, 51 new buses to our fleet, 74 in 2013, and next year, or this year now, in 2014, we'll actually be seeing 90 new buses added to the bus fleet. So we're going to see a complete regeneration, if you will, of our bus capital fleet, which is really fundamental to the service and the quality and reliability of the service that we offer our customers.
So then, do you take, can I ask a question? Do you take the older buses out and put the new buses in place?
Yes.
So it's not new lines or new service or anything?
No, that's right.
Okay.
And so that's just keeping current.
Okay.
And our buses, by the way, I think we've traveled to the moon two or three times by the time they're actually retired, so they're very well utilized. Our goal is to make sure that none of them are older than about 16 years. And right now, we have some 20-year-old buses, which is far too old, and so that's what we're getting ahead of with these purchases I mentioned. I'd also note that due to some increase in federal grants, we're actually also beginning to invest more in some of the, frankly, older rail infrastructure that we've got in the region right now. And if you don't realize, the original light rail line to Gresham is now approaching 30 years old, and it is beginning to have some tattered pieces to it, so we are beginning the rejuvenation, if you will, of some of those investments as well. But we're also, as you all know, well advanced on the Portland-Milwaukee project, and that project has achieved its 50% milestone in 2033. Matter of fact, 2013, it's about 54% complete right now, on time, under budget, and right now, just a couple stats on it, we've surpassed 8,600 construction jobs over its period so far, while on track to the projected 14,000 by the time the project is completed. We've included 120 disadvantaged business firms into the business, and we have an interesting website that actually demonstrates where both the employees and the home location of the firms that are working on the project are, and many, many from Oregon City and the general Clackamas County community. And again, as I noted, we're on schedule. So that's one of the reasons that we want to come and talk to you and many of your constituents and some of the other stakeholders in the southeast Portland, southeast portion of our region. Just note, we've also got a number of other innovations going on, and you may have heard about our mobile app payment system that was developed with Globe Sherpa, a local startup firm. We have actually seen 50,000 downloads of that app since over the first three months of its use. So that's quite a number, and that means a number of customers are really finding another convenient way to pay for their service, which, of course, we like them to pay. And related to that, we also are on the track of beginning to implement, over the long-term here, an electronic payment system, which will, again, I think, make payment for services at TriMet much more, much less difficult than they might be today. But I would tell you that we have some long-term challenges remaining, but certainly the strong employment growth in the region is positive news for us, but our challenge remains our cost structure. And we are addressing that. We've been working with the union, not always smoothly, and we're in midst of difficult contract negotiations right now, but clearly we have some issues related to healthcare costs and retiree healthcare obligations that have accrued over a number of years. But we have made some progress on that, related to the implementation of an arbitration decision that TriMet was favorable to TriMet from last year, and some other improvements in the overall trends for healthcare, which is very, very positive. So we have a lot more to do in that regard, and we're certainly not stepping away from that, but we do have the ability to grow some service and do some positive things in the meanwhile. So while we continue on that sort of basic business course, I do want to tell you and invite your participation in our Service Enhancement Plan, that we're kicking off for the southeast portion of the region again. This really started over about a year ago, when we began a Service Enhancement Plan on the west side portion of our region. And again, that was a portion of the region where we hadn't seen changes in transit service, really, for getting close to 20 years. And as we all know, many things changed, including employment locations and residential density. So we started that and completed that plan toward the end of last year, and that was well, very well received by the local governments and the chambers of commerce and the neighborhood groups and many other stakeholders who participated in that, and created, I think, a very good model for what we want to do in the rest of the region. And so that's the model we're bringing into the southeast sector, including Oregon City, as we look ahead. We're also doing a similar effort right now in East Portland and East Montlamar County and the southwest area, so we've stepped up to really do this because it's an important, I think, element to begin to involve a broader community in visioning what transit service needs to be in order to achieve the plans that you, as a city, have put forth. The Service Enhancement Plan area is outlined in this map, this 11-by-17 that was passed out. It includes Oregon City, yes?
I guess, I don't understand, what is the dotted green, the solid red, the solid blue?
Yeah, there's no...
There's no, like, little key?
Well, they're on the colors.
On the colors?
Yeah, they indicate the bus routes.
Why does it say what the dotted green is?
I think he can tell us why the dotted, I know why it is.
It is the TriMet district boundary, so that's...
No, the other, like, the dotted green?
The dash line...
It goes up Holcomb at 34.
That denotes the Line 34 is peak hour-only service.
Right.
The dash lines are, that's the TriMet system map portion of this that you're seeing, but, yeah, the heavier brown-colored dash line is the outside edges of the southeast area.
Right, right.
As we're thinking of it for this process.
Can I ask a question now? So you said that you're going to start restoration of frequently-used lines. In Oregon City, we've had, you know, many changes, and so I'm glad that we're going to have this, the Servants Enhancement Plan to look at and assess everything. But the Holcomb line is, as you said, is only during certain hours. And then we had Line 153 cut that went down, if you look at the map, High Street, and it goes to South End, and that one was cut.
Right.
And since that line's been cut, we've had housing added there, we've had the South End Concept Plan, and many other circumstances to change and add needs to that area. And that part of the city is really ignored, and my concern is that our bus lines right now basically serve the county. They serve the county and they serve the college.
College.
And a little bit, you know, up for the housing at Holcomb, and that's about it.
That's exactly what we need to hear from you and understand from you and your constituents, is what is the pattern that you really want to see from TriMet service now and in the future. And I would tell you that one of the things that we found in the west side, and I suspect we'll find it here, too, is that there are different kinds of transit service that may come into play. And I'll give you an example, and again, the 153 was an example of a line that I think did a lot of work, but it was not particularly efficient when you think about it from a transit standpoint. It was not carrying enough customers per hour to really justify the TriMet cost of that. But we, for example, we've now got a prototype going on in Forest Grove. We worked with the city of Forest Grove and a nonprofit called Ride Connection to do a service called Grove Link.
What was it called?
And Ride Connection, Grove Link.
Grove.
And again, the city is one of the key partners in that, and we've been able to channel some specially-designated federal funds to help support its operation. And it is providing linkages within the lower-density areas, and because the cost structure of the service is less, the threshold of ridership that has to be achieved to make it feel cost-effective is also less. And I would tell you one example of that that's going on right now in your community is the link that is provided by Clackamas Community College, and again, we support that with federal, special, federal funds, from the Terminus of the Green Line at the Clackamas Town Center to the college, is an example of that kind of a shuttle service in that case. It's very point-to-point. The Grove Link is serving more neighborhood locations, and will actually divert to somebody's house if there's somebody with a mobility issue to actually pick them up. So there are some interesting service models that we'd love to bring to play and begin to talk with the community about, and that's what the Service Enhancement Plan is really about, is not only is it the sort of the standard definition of bus lines, but there's some variations or hybrids on the theme that I think may fit some of the circumstances in your community, and that's what we want to really begin to match with your notions.
I think we'll probably all have some things to say, I know I do. Were there some other points you wanted to address before we get into discussion?
Well, the only other thing that I wanted to really sort of make a note of is that we will have the opportunity with the opening, the service planning that is contemplated with the opening of the Portland-Milwaukee project, to think about some near-term service changes. And that may not be the service that we ultimately want to see in 10 years or 15 years, but we can make some near-term changes, and that's a great opportunity, I think. And in the case of the west side, for example, we did find a number of early implementation items that were really part of that long-term Service Enhancement Plan, but we were actually able to take advantage of it and put them in place on last September. So my hope is that there'll be a number of items that we can do in that regard as well, and just sort of being more efficient and more thoughtful about the service that is out there, and beginning to just not take for granted what's on the street right now. And so maybe, the other thing that I would like to note is, I really wanted to acknowledge that your TSP is a very supportive one for transit, where you're beginning to really focus on pedestrian improvements and bicycle access and the access to transit. And again, it's very important for us as an agency, if we're going to invest in service on a continuing basis, to know that the environment that we're putting that bus into and our customers into is the one that's friendly for transit, and so your investment in those sort of facilities really help us know that the service is occurring in place where people will be able to take advantage of it safely. So I wanted to just acknowledge that, and thank you for those actions. And with that, maybe we'll pause for questions, which is a much better part of the listening to me.
Right, very good. Well, we got, and I'm going to ask all our Commissioners to also go ahead and indicate your desire to speak. Carol Polly, again.
What is your timeline for the Service Enhancement Plan, and what's that process going to look like?
Let me ask Mr. Kautz to respond more specifically to that.
Well, we're going to be gearing up to get out and talk with folks throughout the area over the next several months, so this, a lot of this is about getting out and talking with people that use the system, that live in neighborhoods, or that represent the communities. So that first phase of outreach is through the spring, and at that point, we'll be taking a look at everything we've heard so far and beginning to assemble some initial ideas for improvements. A lot, and that will include the bus service adjustments that would come with the startup of Portland-Milwaukee. So we're thinking by summer, we should have some draft ideas for that, and then back out for another round of conversation and outreach and engagement. And then by next fall, we'll be hopefully refining that service plan for PMLR startup, but also building on our list of what are the other things that are part of a better future for transit. But I think the, I think we'll, we don't want to rush this, we want to be sure we have a chance to thoroughly think about the ideas and to hear, but we're thinking by the middle part of 2015, we should be getting towards more of a shaped vision for the future that we can, again, get back out and talk with everybody about. So about, total of about a 16- to 18-month process for the enhancement plan, but the PMLR service startup will be more like a one-year process for that, just to allow us the time to continue to be ready for service start.
And I might note that as these opportunities also acknowledged, we'll take advantage of those in real time as we consider service improvements each year.
Okay, so will you be doing surveys specific to Oregon City residents and also meeting with neighborhoods and that type of outreach, or...
Yes, neighborhood organizations are key, and I think we're thinking of some, maybe some general surveys that would be more along, maybe broader areas served by particular lines, but we could work with you and staff to look at other surveys that we feel would be maybe geared to your interests in your area specifically.
Okay.
Yeah. There's a pretty broad toolbox on that. We've even done some online-type surveys and have gotten some pretty good responses that way as well.
Thank you.
The, I think I'm on next. The, of course, it was some time ago that you and I and then Nancy Kraschard, who then had a Public Works Talk together, and a few things are brought up at that time. One of them was, as you know, the peak hour service is given to an area where we have our public housing. And I think it'd be good if you had, even if you can't have all of your river road transit going out there on every trip, I think there would be a good reason to at least have them go up occasionally throughout the day. I believe the county is still looking at that area as a further expansion of the public housing, and so I think it's an area that needs to be served. Another thing I had suggested when we were talking is whether or not the service that 33 and 32 and also 99 provide to the college could be extended out further to that neighborhood and to the high school. I'm wondering if the, if TriMet can work with some of the school districts to perhaps more efficiently bring students that live a distance away from their school facility and perhaps have some cost savings, maybe some cost benefits to you all and cost savings to the school district in terms of the bus transport it provides to its students. I don't know how difficult that would be. The other thing I wanted to mention was self-presentation at the Metro Policy Advisory Committee, and we saw that in West Lynn, Oregon City, the future pictures of the bus corridors were not different for us than they were before. Jody mentioned, and I mentioned, that most of, Jody, excuse me, Jody Carson is West Lynn's representative, the IMPAC, is a representative of the small cities, that most of our population, residential population isn't served. I understand why the south-end route disappeared, because I would go down to catch a bus down at the, down at the transit center here in Oregon City when it came in during rush hour, and, you know, just two or three people would get off that bus. However, when you did away with the line, you did away with another service. When you have, my understanding is, if you have, I don't know what, I'll call it the handicap services.
The lift service, yes.
Yeah.
As we call it.
That operates only a certain distance from existing lines.
Right.
What happened then is that some of the, some of those service providers lost their access, and I think that's a tremendous loss, and I think you ought to look at that as a policy. When you, when you do away with the line, are you doing away with the access that you have for people that really need that service? That's a major concern of mine.
Well, let me just note that all of those issues that you've, we've made note of, and we will make sure are part of this overall effort. I would tell you that on the lift issue, it is a difficult issue, but one of the things that is also a characteristic of that service is it's very expensive. We spend over $30 per ride on general when you average out the costs of those rides. And so it is one of the, it's a very important service. It keeps people literally mobile who otherwise couldn't be, and so we recognize the incredible value of it, but it also means we've got to be really careful with it in terms of making sure that the asset is really used well. So those are considerations that we have to weigh when we're looking at the overall budget issues we have. And we have been doing some things to try to manage the number of lift customers so that, you know, that is metered well, and then that may allow us to expand the boundaries a bit more as well. The boundaries themselves are actually set by the Americans with Disabilities Guidelines that are, that follow from the implementation of that act. So, you know, it's a difficult problem, as I would come back to say, and it's not something that I can promise overnight that we have the revenue or the ability to actually do that everywhere in the region, but it is something that we can continue to look at, certainly.
Mr. Mum.
Good discussion, thank you for coming. I kind of do have huge concerns about TriMet's finances with their unions and stuff, and I'm not sure you guys are going to get it worked out, and I'm afraid it's going to go upside down, so what's your B-plan?
Well...
I just like to be a little bit prepared. I'm sure you've got a B-plan.
We don't meet around the bush out here, guys.
You don't have to answer, it's okay.
What I just would note is that there has been a lot of skepticism that we would be able to actually secure some of the concessions, and we did win the last arbitration, and we did secure some of those concessions. And we do have an offer on the table with the union that I think is very fair and would put us in a position where it's accepted by an arbitrator, the key elements of it, to really be able, to say that we are financially stable over the long haul and meet all the obligations that we have. But I would tell you that, yes, it is going to be hard, and we are an agency that the state legislature's put into the binding arbitration statute, and you're familiar with that, I'm sure, with some of your labor agreements, and it's very hard to make drastic changes all at once, and so I'm not sure that we even need that drastic of change, but we do need change, and we need it, and it will occur to some extent gradually. The first contract was a great down payment and is really beginning to help us. This next one is equally important to really ensure what we call financial stability over the long haul. So that really is the plan. It is that we've got to get our cost structure in line, and we have a plan to do that, and we have the proposals to do that, and we know exactly what it will take, and we're working with the union to do that right now.
I wish you well on that, I do. So a couple of other comments I have. The shuttle services that you had talked about, you had said you'd gotten federal grants for that.
Yes.
So is that something, once the federal money goes away, that the city has to provide, or does that call, does that fall back on you guys? Because we, we give you X amount of dollars to do this service for our citizens, correct?
Correct. So in this case, well, you're payroll taxpayers.
Yes.
Do you support TriMet, certainly within Oregon City, no question. And what we will do is, we have, we do have a bit of a funding issue in the future, but we've got some funds that have saved in... but we've got some funds that have saved in this particular federal funding category that allow us two to three years of stability on that. And, but we will face that question about, do we make it part of the TriMet fund stream? We don't want to do that to the extent that it also brings with it the cost structure. We want to make sure that the lower level cost structure is maintained there. So, we'll have some work to do in that regard, no question.
So, then on the other side, when you cut service, we continue to pay you that money for the same exact service that you had cut, correct?
Well, the payroll taxes are rate that your payroll taxpayers pay.
I understand that, yeah.
Yes.
So, it's the same amount of money going into your pocket. So, I would hate for you to come back and offer to charge us more for shuttle service, just saying, okay? I understand that everybody needs to pay their fair share, and I'm fine with that, but I don't want to be overpaying or having our citizens overpay.
Right.
And two neighborhood associations that I strongly suggest that you go to is Holcomb and South End. Those two are, and...
Hazel Grove.
Hazel Grove, Wesley Lynn.
Farm.
Thank you. Three. Those, those three neighborhoods are the strongest hit by this, especially up in Holcomb where the projects are. There's just so many low-income people down, you know, out there, and it was just very, very upsetting to have that service cut because many of them are just trying to get along on minimum wage, and they don't have a vehicle to get to work and to get to babysitters. I mean, it's just not good. So, the other question I had is maybe for staff, funding. Is, is this money dedicated to TriMet for X amount of years? Can we take some of that money out and maybe offer it to CAMB to have them drive up South End and bring people down to the Transit Center?
You want to try?
I'll try. It's my understanding that that's not as easy as it used to be. So, there are other jurisdictions that have withdrawn from the TriMet service boundary in the past, and the legislature's made changes to the law that allows that to happen to make that more difficult. Now, I've also heard that they're reconsidering that as well. So, but I think today, that's not an option.
Okay.
Withdraw from the TriMet boundary.
Well, I was just saying, take part of that money and put it to somebody that can provide the service to South End.
I think the, the, and maybe TriMet can speak to this a little better than I can, but I mean, the, basically, the cost of service has outgrown what used to be the service, the, the area that they were serving. And so, we're seeing that getting whittled down. So, the cost per mile traveled, I suppose, has essentially gone up. And so, that's, that's kind of really where that's at. But while I have the floor, I just wanted to say a couple of things. I, I just want to be clear, Neil and, and, and Steve have...
Steve, you need to meet with John Moore.
No, that was, that was going to be my point, is they're so accessible. They've been very accessible to us for any, for any of the meetings that you've asked for and I've asked for. You know, they've attended most of our transportation system plan meetings. We, we, we see one another pretty regularly at the county C4 meetings.
Yes.
So, Steve is there, I see him at metro meetings. He's very accessible. So, that's, I guess, the good news is, is, you know, we're communicating about our, our problems and our, our service desires pretty regularly. Steve, I think, knew, and hopefully Neil did too, I think he did, that, you know, we were going to probably test some of these, these service limits at least tonight and on into the future. So, I guess the communication lines have always been open and, but the, but the challenge always comes up against this, this ability to, to extend service because of the cost. And one of the other things I wanted to mention about that lift service, what I understand, this is true for all transit providers in the metro area that I, that I'm aware of. Once you have a route that you show a frequency of stops in, so, this doesn't necessarily apply to CAT where they come down South End Road or 99E, but if they had stops along that area, then they would also be required to, there's a distance from that travel lane.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm trying to remember how...
Three-quarter mile buffer on either side of the line.
Right, so, three-quarter mile buffer on either side of the line where they are then mandated to serve those customers who have special needs. And so, not only is it the cost to just run the service...
Right.
It's, it's this added lift service cost that, you know, takes that kind of exponentially, you know, more problematic for them. So, you know, that, that kind of says, so, when we say, why can't we just have a bus route that goes where it used to go, which is, you know, up South End and around Park Lo and Central Point?
Well, I understand, there's more to it than that, yeah.
So, because of that, that, that then also triggers lift service throughout the rest of the region.
Sure, sure.
So, that's, that's, that's one thing. The other point that I wanted to make was the, the PMLR, the Portland-Milwaukee Light Rail, what the, some of, what I heard, we, we had a meeting on this recently, which TriMet sponsored, and what I heard from that was when that rail line is online, bus service between Oregon City and Portland will change, right? And I think that's an important thing for you to start thinking about as well. What I, I understand that to mean is that's, that will become a transfer location, right? So, someone getting on a bus in Portland will then not be able to drive, take the bus directly into Portland, they'll take it to the Milwaukee Transfer Station and make a transfer there. And I think that's an important thing that you're looking for feedback on as well, right? So, as we move into that. Because that, you know, that's, that's a, that could, has the potential to be a significant change.
Yeah, so, can you explain that again, then?
So, if you're catching the bus here, or, either way, if you're going into Portland on a bus, on any of our bus service lines that run along 99E, basically, and would run past the Milwaukee Light Rail Station, they, they propose, well, actually, they haven't made this proposal, but what I got from the current thinking is, is that that bus service would then stop there at Milwaukee, and a rider would get off and get on the light rail, ride light rail into Portland, and same way coming out. That's a pretty big change.
Instead of taking the bus into Portland.
Right. And, and maybe that's going to be more efficient. I, you know, I, it's kind of hard for me to know as non, you know, transit rider and someone who's not done that before, but I think that's an important, that's a pretty important piece for Oregon City.
To remember.
To remember, and, you know, when we're providing feedback about these, you know, the, the changes with regard to the Milwaukee Light Rail Service, that you, that you're clear about that.
Do you want to speak to that? We didn't hear that from you, so...
Well, let me just note that I, that, that is sort of the vision right now, and one of the things we want to do is, is, you know, confirm that vision or not as we move through this, the service plan. I think it's, it's pretty truthful that we don't want to offer duplicate service. And when we've got light rail running, running next to a street, we don't want to do, we don't want to duplicate that. So, you know, that would, that would be the implication of that. But the other thing that I think is important about that, and what we've been, have found in the other implementation of light rail corridors, is that if we can also use some of that, that, that's an opportunity to be more creative with the bus hours that are available. So, there may be some other connections within the community that can be made, that aren't made right now with the bus system. So, there, that's one of the, I think, also areas for creativity. I mean, one of the, I think, great findings in light bulbs that went off with the West Side Service Enhancement Plan, and I suspect we'll find the same thing with the Southeast, is how much service need there is within these communities, right? It's not just moving into Portland, it is within the broader Clackamas County and Oregon City community that, that, that mobility is required and needed. And to some extent, our root structure has been developed over decades to really be focused on Portland. And one of the things that the Service Enhancement Plans often do is come back with a notion about needing to serve multiple destinations within the local communities, not just provide great service into Portland, which I think we probably have done for a long time. So, that's one of, I think, the light bulbs that often go on as we, as we progress these plans.
So, have you felt that maybe you've grown too fast, too big, maybe you should...
Well...
I mean, I don't know.
I probably would have thought that in about 2008, when we saw the floor drop through the payroll tax, and frankly, our calculation of where, the difference between where we ended up being and where we thought we were being, where we thought we'd be, was about $43 million a year. And so, that's why, of course, you saw fare increases and, and service reductions. It's hap, it's, it's good to know that the floor is beginning to get much more solid under our feet right now, and I think we've got a good base to grow from.
So, one of my last questions is, the lift service that's been talked about, I mean, that is still paid for by an individual that's using that service, correct?
No, that, that is subsidized very heavily by TriMet, by the payroll taxpayers.
Their, their fare is the same as the fare on the regular bus. It's $2.50, $2.50 towards the cost.
$2.45, actually. There's a nickel discount, which actually may disappear here before too long, but that's a, but yes, essentially the same price as a regular bus ticket.
Okay.
Commissioner Roth?
John wanted to respond.
I have another item, I don't need to respond to that.
Go ahead.
So, one other thing that I wanted to mention was, there's a, there's a, a service out that's kind of interesting. I mean, TriMet has been pointing the city and I think other cities at some example programs. For instance, a program in Forest Grove that's, you know, works, and I think, I think they work well for those cities on the fringe, which provides another service provider, almost a third-party service provider, that would be, you know, for the most part, those have been through grants, and there's this question about long-term funding. But another little example of that is the Shuttle Woods. I believe they've got some grant funding to implement the Shuttle Woods, so, I don't, Mary's Woods.
Mary's Woods.
Oh, yes.
Mary's Woods, they call it Shuttle in the Woods. But this is, this is a program that's now in, in service. It's coming to Oregon City. It's using the Mary's Woods Retirement Center fleet, and I'm not quite sure how they came to the conclusion that that was the right thing to try, but I think they're wanting to try it. So, there's really a couple of trips that come into Oregon City throughout the day between Mary's Woods and Oregon City Evangelical Church. And it's those kinds of solutions that I'm hearing, you know, that, you know, we need to look towards those kind of things. We've also met with the county, and the county has a, some service more of kind of the lift service or special needs services, that they kind of have a dispatch center and a system that could, could grow into something bigger, more extensive, that would then interface with TriMet services. So, just, just so it's clear, that's, that's more of the solutions that, that Steve and I have talked about.
Yes.
But there's a pretty big question about, well, you've put a fair amount of energy into that, and you kind of get a customer base around that, and how long does that funding last? And so, we haven't really, I guess I've been, you know, we've been a little reluctant to know what to do with that.
And that's my issue. If you're going to do this shuttle service and you apply for grants or, you know, some other funding, eventually that funding is going to go away, and it will become your job to fill that gap.
We're not doing it, actually. This is TriMet's grant, right?
Right. No, this is TriMet's grant. I know, I understand that, but I'm saying if we, as a city, decide to do that, it falls to us to figure out how we're going to long-term fund that, and that is not an easy job to do.
That's right.
So, I don't know, we have to be very thoughtful about that process, and that's why I'm not happy to be paying more for shuttle service.
And, you know, at this point, we're not asking that.
Yeah, no, I know.
But, but...
I'm just putting it out there now, so you know.
I appreciate it, I appreciate it. And just the, the note that I think that there are some interesting and creative solutions that we have on these, related to that, the long-term, and, you know, that's, we certainly, before we'd entered into some arrangement to do that, we would need to know the roadmap ahead, no question.
Yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner Roth.
Okay, I'm coming at this from a little bit different point of view. I do ride TriMet occasionally and frequently the north-south streetcar line. So, a couple of things or problems I've got there. But I do appreciate the new buses.
Good, thank you.
I like them very much. So, this question has been on my mind for years, for about 30 years. Why don't we go underground?
It's a capital cost issue. As I tell people, I actually was early in my career, project manager for parts of the West Side Light Rail Project, which did go underground, and I started that with a full head of hair. So, you can, it, it is, it is a really, to a large extent, it has been a, a cost issue that underground alignments are much more expensive. But I'd also say that there was an urban design choice that was made in, with the early incubation of the system. I, I can't take blame or credit for it before my time, but that, that it was important to blend the service with the streetscape and for the service to be part of the, of the street life within the city. And that's why, for example, the light rail stations are part of the sidewalk of the city when you get into downtown, and the streetcar is an extension of that. So, it takes longer, though, and there are more conflicts, and so, those are things that need managed as you develop that. And it may be that there will be a time when that's not the right solution, but I still think it, it works pretty well in Portland.
That's what I'm, I'm wondering about, the, the time that it takes, is, you know, considerably different. The other thing that really concerns me is the number of free riders I see. And that's easier to contain when you're in an underground system.
Much easier. And I would tell you that one of the reasons that we're interested in moving to an electronic fare system is that it would allow us to begin to establish what they, what in the transit business are called barrier-style stations in more locations. We can't do it everywhere, again, where the system is part of a sidewalk, that doesn't work. But, for example, at the Bybee Station on the Portland-Milwaukee line, or the Oak Grove Station that will be on the Portland-Milwaukee, we may be able to establish a barrier to sort of fence off the station and make sure people have to go through a turnstile where they have a proof-of-purchase activating that. So, and we think that that is a solution in some other areas of the, of the system as well that we'd like to see. So, we'll, we'll be piloting that with the Portland-Milwaukee project as we implement, that's more like 2016, 2017, as we implement the electronic fare system. But what we have done, and I, just to note that I'm not always popular about this, but I have cranked up the fare enforcement quite dramatically on the light rail system, increasing both the number of fare inspectors pretty dramatically, as well as changing the policies so that we do issue a whole lot more citations. And that actually, our surveys have shown, have dramatically reduced the number of fare riders. And one thing that, just to note, that about 50% of our riders actually have a pass instrument. So, sometimes it might look like somebody's getting on without paying, but they actually have got a pass in their pocket. So, that's, that's why the fare inspection is an important part of our business and one that we've really had to increase, that I felt we really needed to increase dramatically for that reason.
Okay, thank you. A couple of the questions have already been answered, like the South End and the handicap line and the Holcomb line. What's going to be the car capacity at the Park and Ride for Park and McLaughlin?
So, at Park and McLaughlin, about 350 is I...
Is that going to be one level?
There is, I'm sorry?
Is it going to be one level?
No, it's multiple levels, it's a garage with multiple levels. And then there's also parking available at Johnson Creek or Tacoma and, and McLaughlin.
Okay.
There'll be parking at that station as well.
Something I thought about when you were talking about surveys is directing the surveys to the people that are actually on the line. So, when you're on, maybe you can just get your phone out and do the survey while you're on the bus.
Right, and actually, we do a lot of that, and we really like that technique. And it is really, it's important to hear, obviously, from the riders about if there's a change that's proposed, how it will affect them and whether there's an alternative available for them. So, that, that is a very, very potent tool that we really do use a lot.
Okay.
As Steve noted, we're also beginning to use a lot more electronic surveys, and as we capture the emails of our riders and we provide them, that's a very effective thing for us, first of all, because we can provide them information about the service. If there's something, a delay or an interruption or a crash somewhere that delays service, we're able to provide that information to those riders. But it also allows us to interact and ask the questions, as you're suggesting.
Yeah, I, I really like the app, too, where you can walk up and scan the QRC and tell when it's going to be there. That's, that's wonderful. Along with that is, well, talking of electronics, you know, you've got the little reader boards inside of the things on the streetcar lines?
Yes.
And they say minutes, minutes, rather than minutes, seconds. And they say minutes, minutes, rather than minutes, seconds, drives me crazy.
We'll pass that on.
Okay.
As, as you probably know, the, the, the streetcar is actually owned by the city of Portland, now, we, we support very heavily its operation, um--
Somebody needs to change that clock.
Yes, um, they, they did actually sign up for an early implementer of that real-time information service, um, and so, um, it, that may be a, that's not our service, that's being--
It's a separate proprietary product that they purchase.
But we'll pass on the comment, because I think you're right.
What, what bureau takes care of that?
I'm sorry?
What bureau takes care of that?
It's the Transportation Bureau.
Yeah.
But it's also--
You know them, don't you?
I know them, my new boss just came from them.
Yeah, so, pass on your boss.
Portland Streetcar, Inc. is the other, sort of, nonprofit side of that operation as well.
Okay, um, the transit mull in Oregon City scares me, and I was at the Moda Center yesterday, there was a TriMet person patrolling that area, but then you get to Oregon City at, at dark, and it's like, I don't think I want to get off the bus here, you know?
Well, I really do appreciate that, that question, that comment, uh, one of the things I did want to note to you is that we do have, um, we do know that the Oregon City Transit Center needs some improvement, and particularly in lighting, and some ADA pedestrian improvements.
It's very dark.
And it is on our list to do that, uh, we had proposed a project earlier with the city, working with the city staff--
Yes.
--to do that, and what we really, we really want to come back to that, and recognize that that's important, um, Steve gave, actually gave me some interesting statistics, we, on that, a very heavily-used transit center, and, um, I think, yeah, many people don't recognize how heavily-used it is, but seven TriMet lines, plus can-be connections, three-hundred-and-fifty, three hundred and fifty times a day, a bus comes or grows from that center, and that represents fifteen thousand boarding, so people, there's fifteen thousand people walking to and from it.
Yes.
So, um, it, it deserves some attention and improvement from us, and we, we recognize that, um, and we'll make sure that that gets into our plans as well.
Okay, because I was, you know, you look down here, there's a lot of people down here, when I was at Moda Center yesterday, there was nobody there but a transit person.
Yeah.
Oh, it was just kind of, that's kind of strange. Um, two more, I think that we need to, the whole area, Portland area, I should say, needs to become a little bit more urban-minded in how we look at our transit system, we tend to be kind of colonial, and look at things the way that it's always been done, and I think that maybe we need to look at more urban centers that are maybe a little bit larger, and look at their models of how they've had some opportunities and solutions, and I think that that's an education program that needs to be looked at, so, that's--
I appreciate that, that's a, that's a very good comment, and I think the Service Enhancement Plans offer us an opportunity to sort of step back and do exactly some of that.
Mm-hmm, and last, is there going to be a fare hike this year?
I'm not proposing a fare hike in September.
Okay, 'cause we just got a raise in our allowances for TriMet, so I'm just, was wondering if it's gonna go away, you know?
No change from our standpoint, at least what's proposed now.
Perfect, thank you so much.
As you know, I work for a board of directors, they may have their own opinion, but that's--
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Um, I think most everything's been talked about, I, I guess one, um, question I would have is, is a general question about light rail, and, um, with the opposition that was seen for the Milwaukee line, how does that, um, and I, I think we all know in some ways how it's gonna affect, um, the future of light rail out into our area, and which would have, you know, be kind of the, one of the next segments in Plaquemines County, um, so, how's that, how did that opposition, I think, change, um, TriMet's view on what to do in the future, in terms of coming out far further this, this direction with light rail?
Well, one thing that I would just note, um, is that at least I, and I think TriMet really historically have been pretty, what's the right word, ecumenical about transit mode, we love buses as much as we love, um, trains, um, the, the trains, I think, the, the light rail system has actually been quite important for some communities in terms of achieving both their economic development objectives, and also, um, providing some of that mobility in concentrated corridors, and from an operating cost standpoint, that's been advantageous to TriMet, because we do carry our customers on the light rail system at a much reduced cost per ride compared to the bus system overall, and that's just the efficiency of rail, uh, built into that. Um, the, one of the things that has made the development of the light rail system in, in the region, I think, an attractive investment has been the federal match, and so, one of the questions that one needlessly, say, asks, given the, um, things we see going on in Washington, DC, is what will be the future of that?
Right.
And how will that change some of our investment decisions, and it may. Um, I would tell you that there are two efforts underway right now in the region that are what we would call high-capacity transit studies.
Right.
One is the, um, Powell Division Corridor, um, and that one is just starting, um, and I would say that the presumption going into that is that will be something like a bus rapid transit system, where we look for ways to expedite the buses through congestion, points of congestion, and provide stations and amenities like we do for the rail system, but do that for buses. Um, and the other is along the Barber Ninety-Nine W Corridor, uh, to Tigerhead, and ultimately to Toowallton, and I would say that a bus-related system is very, um, along with light rail, is being evaluated in that corridor, so, um, my own view is that really, the, the bus system is really the core of our system, and if you look at our ridership, about sixty percent of our riders, um, use the bus system, and about forty percent, you know, popular, related to the number of rides, if sixty percent are on the bus system, forty percent are on the rail system, so, we're, we're actually more balanced than some people think, but most of our riders use them both, um, and actually interchange between them, and in, in whatever is the most effective pattern for them to use the system. I hope that answered your question, I don't--
I think so.
Sorry.
I think you were being cautious, because, uh, I, I definitely, um, I, I don't know where I fit in the majority of, of people, but I'm still very much an Oregon City person that wants to see light rail to Oregon City, I think that, um, in some ways, Milwaukee may have made that decision for us, um, and I'm worried about that, I think, in the future, but, um, I ride TriMet frequently, um, and, um, wish I had more opportunities to do so, I was coming home late the other night from the airport, and, um, spent a fair amount on a taxi to Oregon City, and, um, would have much rather jumped on light rail or on the bus, but, um, so, appreciate it, thank you.
Appreciate that, and I would also just note that I think, um, we, we've always seen opposition to rail lines--
Right.
But we've also seen a lot of support for the rail lines--
Right.
--including the financial support from many of the local governments and constituents who've, um, invested in those systems, so, um, we'll see.
We still have Commissioner questions coming up, but we'll allow David Fraser to butt into our conversation here.
Mr. McFarlane, I want to thank you and your, your, both of you for being here tonight, it's gracious of you to come out and spend so much time with us. Um, a while ago, Commissioner Roth mentioned the, the OC Transit Center, and you said you wanted to look at it, and I'm trying to nail you down a little bit more on when, I want to make sure we're there to cooperate and help--
Yes.
--as much as we can, so, can you give us a little more specific than you'd like to look at it?
Well, I don't know that I can right now, but I can, we can certainly get back to you about that, and what I, I know that it's included in our capital improvement program, what I don't know is exactly what year and when, so, whether it's in the next year or the year after, I think is a, sort of, the range we're looking at.
Okay, so, within twenty-four months, we, we think--
We should be able to see some improvement, yeah.
Okay, um, you know, I, I wish you would've been here a year ago, I could've made you a deal on some trolleys.
Yeah.
Oh, we still have a trolley, go ahead, purchase from us.
We want to have good relations with TriMet, yeah.
But with, with that said, I'm not eager to get into the transportation business myself, but I know that, uh, it's kind of been a hot topic among my fellow colleagues, city managers around the region, and many of us, including me, have done some preliminary inquiries with some of the opt-out cities, and we find that, um, the services, particularly the costs of delivering the service, seem to be markedly less than what you're dealing with right now, and we're, I'm wondering if, uh, thinking about your labor negotiations, if it would be helpful to you to, for more of the cities to do feasibility studies about doing their own transit, or opting out and providing some other sort of contracted service, if, if more of those feasibility studies were being done and seriously considered, if that might not strengthen your leverage in, uh, exacting some concessions from labor?
Um, candidly, I, I don't think it would help, it would change, or change to be around the table, uh, one thing that I would can, I'd tell you that is, both me and my board know the changes we have to make, and are very dedicated to those, so, that's number one, but number two, what I've heard from our union counterparts is, um, not, is that the level of service is not their primary concern, their level of benefits is their primary, so--
Yeah, okay.
It's, it's, it's a miss in terms of the motivation.
Well, you know, the irony is, if you, if you can't, aren't successful in solving it as best you can within the labor environment, then eventually, cities have to, you know, they will do these feasibility studies, and they will opt out, and they will make other arrangements for their travel needs, and I'd rather have you deal with that, so we don't ultimately have to, and, um, I wish you the very best, and let us know if we can help in any way, I think we've always had a really good relationship, especially at the staff level, with TriMet, and we're looking forward to that continuing.
Likewise, thank you.
Uh, Kara Polley?
Um, yeah, thanks again for coming and having this discussion with us, I know it's hard to predict, but I'm gonna ask you anyway, um, with the Southeast Service Enhancement Plan, looking at the one that was done on the West Side, um, do you think we're really gonna be looking at other alternatives as far as grants and other types of lines, instead of having the discussion of adding back lines that have been cut, and looking at the needs and seeing if they're warranted?
So, I, my, my, sort of, crystal ball is a little murky, but I would say that there'd be some of both, there'd be some places where we may have had a line that was, we know was not, um, successful, in terms of the ridership that it generated, and that, that needs, uh, a solution with a different cost structure to really make that of a good value for the public, and I think that's what we're really, sort of, at, at the end of the day, all, what, what we all are, um, looking for, um, but there may be some places where we, where we can and should be extending lines or, or establishing lines, um, and in the Washington County case, there was, it was a combination of both, and part of that just depends on the, 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 uh, geography and the layout of the communities and the areas that we're, we're attempting to serve, uh, in some cases, the forty-foot bus is just not the right solution, um, in, in some of those areas.
Okay, I have a question about funding, too, um, does the amount of, uh, payroll taxes paid in each city, does that have any effect on the service to that city?
Well, not directly, um, but we, and I'd be honest with you, it's very hard to know, um, the payroll tax paid in any particular city, and one of the reasons is you, for example, you think about Fred Meyer, and they pay from one account for their entire, for all the properties that might be within the metropolitan area, so, we wouldn't know what, uh, what proportion was, um, from any particular jurisdiction, um, but, that said, um, are the studies that we've done, and we, we, we did this on the West Side, I haven't done it for Plaquemines County or Oregon City, did show that there was a rough parallel between, uh, the service provided and the payroll tax paid.
So, we need to work on our tax base. Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
A couple of things, when you're, when we're looking at our transit center, um, and, uh, I know, I think Portland installed so many of those rain shelters along their main, main, uh, Broadway and so forth, but, um, maybe we could work with them in some way, be it Urban Renewer some way, so we could have some rain shelters there at the Transit Center.
Sure.
Um, I think that would be nice.
And benches.
And benches, yeah, and benches, um, well, I'm tall enough, I can use those retaining walls, but, anyway, um, another thing that I've noticed, um, I was, until last year, I was a frequent user of, uh, Bus Thirty-Five going out of the Transit Center, and at that point, oftentimes, the, the driver is taking a break or something, a lot of people get on the bus, they leave the door open, which is good, sit down, oftentimes, a bus driver doesn't check them, to see if they've got the pass, or something, now, maybe, maybe they're so familiar with it that they know all those guys have the pass, but it bothered me a little bit.
Yeah.
I'd always get up and go up there and then pay when he got on, but he didn't, they didn't seem to make any request for that, so you might want to find that out.
That's a good thing to check into, thank you.
Um, the other thing comes to what Commissioner Smith was talking about, in terms of a rapid transit center between Milwaukee and Oregon City, I realize light rail is very expensive, and I know you are looking at other models, however, we were the trolley destination, as you know, uh, the urban, our interurban was the first in the nation, and, uh, whether it be a light rail, or whether it be an electric line system, I think in--
Absolutely.
Uh, I, I think it'd be very meaningful for us to see that kind of provision given. Light rail, if light rail was not economical, maybe a trolley on a rail, and if a rail doesn't seem economical, uh, I, I remember the trolleys in Portland, I, I took them, I remember the one on Foster, was a bus trolley, uh, it wasn't, and didn't operate on rails, and I see in Seattle, there are a few of those still operating there, uh, I think, uh, I think in terms of our particular heritage and so forth, we really like to see that form of energy going into our rapid transit system.
Well, I appreciate those comments, and, um, we will, uh, take that, take that on board, one of the things I would just note, as a sidelight, about transit technology, is that it is changing, and one of the things that we're, uh, looking at over time is the electrification of the system, uh, and there's some, they're very expensive now, but there's some very interesting bus technologies that actually run entirely on electric batteries, um, and so, um, the, the notion of having to run a line, um, everywhere, may not be the future, so that's the other thing I think we have to keep in mind, uh, but, you know, you're absolutely right about electric technology, and where I think we, we ultimately, long-term, uh, need to be heading.
With that, I think we're done at the Commission level, but we have two citizens, do we have a hand mic available, Nancy?
Yes.
Uh, I'll come, ask you to come up one at a time, instead of two, because our two seats are occupied, but, uh, John Charles?
Really coming up to--
Doctor, hand mic.
Just--
That was a hand mic.
Uh, thank you, members of the Commission, my name is John Charles, Cascade Policy Institute, which is a nonprofit policy research center, and I just wanted to comment on some of the things I heard here today, uh, first is, a comment by Mr. Lewis, and that was very appropriate, which is, what's going to happen when Milwaukee Light Rail opens, because the comments from the TriMet staff about potential improvements here were sort of very vague in general, but the degradation of your service is known and very specific, was stated in the two thousand eight environmental impact statement for Milwaukee Light Rail Project, that when that, the day that opens, Express Bus, ninety-nine E, is not going to be express busing anymore, at least not all the way to Portland, it's gonna be connecting to downtown Milwaukee, well, you're taking a fast bus and making people get off to get on a slow train, for me personally, when I was reading the EIS, to try to determine whether I would support or oppose that project, that was it for me, that was the deal-breaker right there, why would we spend a billion and a half dollars on a slow train in Milwaukee and degrade transit service, uh, for bus riders from Oregon City? And that's not an unusual experience, that happened for the first Max Line from Gresham, it happened on the West Side, when the Fifty-Seven Express became a Fifty-Seven local, that, as Mr. McFarlane mentioned, that the habit of TriMet is basically to cannibalize superior bus service when the slow train opens, because they don't really want duplicate service, especially bus service that's actually a superior experience for the transit rider, and I always view this as, I'm a transit passenger, I just want it to work well, so, I, I believe your service here is going to degrade before it improves, and that's something that you should be concerned about. Now, the second point is, that, uh, eleven months ago, Mr. McFarlane expressed, showed to his board, his projection out to twenty-thirty, of what would happen to TriMet if they don't get a better contract with the union, and it was kind of a death spiral situation, beginning FY-seventeen, deficits out to infinity, growing deficits, that would decimate service, and apropos the comment Commissioner Moon made about what's Plan B, well, I go to most TriMet board meetings, I've gone to all of the planning retreats of the board for the last five years, this has been a favorite, uh, reluctantly favorite topic of conversation, and I don't know of a Plan B, there just is, but we have to keep negotiating. There just is, well, we have to keep negotiating. And if getting unions to make very large concessions on contracts was easy, purse crisis would have been solved 15 years ago.
Yeah.
And that prompted me frankly to work for the next six months writing a paper, which I just released yesterday, and I think some of you may have a copy that was handed out. I have more here for anyone who's interested. Paper, which we only released yesterday, suggesting the cities and counties in fact ought to consider opting out of TRIMET. It has been done, there's no big mystery about it. And I think the comments made by ATU representatives on the record during these mediation sessions, and they're all on TRIMET's website, there's, you know, many, many hundreds, if not thousands of pages of documents, the ATU people make it very, very clear. They know they have one of the best fringe benefits packages of any union in America. They worked very hard for it and they're not giving it back. And this is going to go on and on and on. I see major problems ahead, beginning maybe two years from now, projected service cuts after cuts after cuts. And I believe, and what, when I looked, wrote this paper up, I looked at the opt-out cities. And I bought a house in Sandy in 1995, and Sandy was already doing its due diligence to consider opting out. I was a regular TRIMET commuter, and when Sandy Area Metro finally kicked off in 2000, and they left TRIMET and started, as a rider, it was awesome. It was get out of jail free day. Service went from peak hour to all day. It went, we had Saturday service, which we didn't have before. And the payroll tax rate was lower, still is lower, for Sandy businesses. And the cost to passengers was zero. Zero is a very good price. The only, only this October did they finally institute a minimum of $1 fare for the Sam business. Now, I actually, I don't support zero price, I think customers should pay something. But, point is, I mean, this paper that you all have, if you look, you see the metrics, Malala, Canby, Sandy, and Wilsonville all have a lower payroll tax rate, far, far lower costs of labor, lower costs of everything, and from the standpoint of a rider, improved service compared to what they had. So, plus TRIMET's done a number of contracting out experiments on the West Side as well as the East Side. And they can only do that for three years, and then the contract has to come back in-house because of the union issues. But when they've contracted out, competitive bids, they know their labor costs are far above the market rate. So, I really think that going forward, it would, it would behoove you, and Mr. Fraser there made a comment himself that I think is also very appropriate at the end, his peers, your peers, there's no harm, I don't think, in beginning a little due diligence, kind of talking to the opt-out cities. You have a long track record here, there's not a big mystery about it. And I do, I think it actually would strengthen TRIMET management hand with the union, because basically if the district were to shrink more than it already has, well, some labor would have to go. And the union's stance on these things might be a little different if they were looking at losing 50% of their unionized members because a whole bunch of cities and counties are beginning to create their own smaller, cheaper, thriftier districts. But even if that weren't the case, I think you have to look out for your own interests. You have to have Plan B. And for a tiny amount of money, you could direct your staff possibly to coordinate with like-minded folks in other satellite cities and counties, possibly even hire, jointly hire a consultant and say, hey, let's, let's just kind of look into this. Let's do a little bit of preliminary work, see how it pans out. And after a year, 15 months, you might decide, no, there's really no scenario that works for us. That's fine. But when I, let's just say, when I interviewed Mayor Malone, the longtime mayor of Sandy recently for my paper, and she led that whole charge, she said flat out, the best thing I ever did, the best thing we ever did when I was mayor was set up our own transit system. And she was mayor for a long time. Then they're not trying to get back in. Wilsonville, Malala, Canby, no one's petitioning to get back in. So, I think that's just something you should learn from. I think you've had a great discussion tonight, and it'd be great if TRIMET could get its labor costs under control. But I've talked to lots of their staff and board members over the years, and I always say, so, I know you want that to happen, how, how can you make it happen? Where's the leverage? There is no leverage. It's a nice thought, but if it doesn't happen, there's a death spiral ahead.
Mr. Charles, we have a question from the commissioner.
Yes. I'd like to ask, I didn't, just to, you know, a quick cursory flip through this, but I didn't see anything that compares workers' compensation and accident rates to opt-out cities and TRIMET.
I don't think I know those. And also, some of the opt-out cities, they have their own in-house staff run the system and some contract out. So, the staff of the city might not even know that. That's, that's the business of the entity they contract with.
So, I'm just wondering, you know, if you've got laborers that are trained and have, what should I say, mandatory training standards that they meet through the unions that are, your accident rates aren't comparable or something?
I don't know anything about accident rates. As far as workers' comp, everyone is going to have to, will be subject presumably to the same workers' comp rates.
Well, not just workers' comp though, but regular accidents, you know, just.
Yeah. I'm not really familiar with that topic myself.
Okay.
No, we've got one more person. Would you, could you pass that mic to John, Mr.?
Tom O'Brien.
Mr. O'Brien, please.
Mr. Katz and Mr. McFarland don't have to break their necks. David, a minute?
Yeah. We're charged for the seat, though.
Okay. It's worth a penny.
Or two.
First off, I appreciate both of you coming this evening. I also appreciate Mr. Charles coming. The comments that I'm about to make are both personal and representative of the Neighborhood Association known as Hazel Grove Westling Farms. Mr. Katz, I would invite you to mark your calendar right now, tonight, for the third Thursday in April. I am not only co-chair of that association, but I'm also the program chair. And I am holding a spot open for you, sir, to come and meet the people who have been most affected by your discontinuance as a system. For half of what was a Circle Eight loop, you claim that you've discontinued 153 because of lack of ridership. Yet you kept the other half of the Circle Eight, 154, which had a little better ridership. I would liken that to most routes which you run from Portland City Center to the outlined metro areas, in that those passengers who board and only travel part of the way, not fully to the end of the line, tend to make that line inefficient past a certain point. And that is what you've done with the discontinuance of 153. You've taken half of a line and you've cut it off. Relative to how that has affected the citizenry, we have had people come to our Neighborhood Association meetings, and to city meetings, and have asked us to come before the city commission to express their feelings about the lack of lift service, where they've lost jobs for their handicapped individuals, other members of our community along the South End Corridor who have lost their jobs because they could no longer get to them. That doesn't help your payroll taxes any. It does not contribute one cent. It takes away revenues that you currently get. Also, I personally serviced or paid the payroll tax for 20 years as an employee. At no time during that 20 years did I live in the city of Portland. All of the residents who live out in these outlined areas, while they are employed by firms elsewhere, are paying their share of payroll taxes. Yet the people who live within the city, basically, are getting the benefit of those taxpayers who are employed but not using the service. I could not use the service in that 20-year period because much like your supervisors within your own company, my job required that I be able to move from point to point in an automobile. Yet I paid for bus service 52% of your revenue as my proportionate share. On a personal basis, when I purchased my home in the South End Corridor, it was three blocks off of South End Road, one of the motivating factors for me was that I was going to be retiring within a couple of years, and I knew that I was going to be giving up my company automobile, and I was going to be relying on bus service more frequently. I use transit extensively when I go to San Francisco, or Washington DC, or Atlanta, or Cleveland, even occasionally in Chicago. I use it extensively in Europe when I travel. I'm not opposed to transit. I think it's wonderful. But I think you have to be fair to those people who are paying your payroll tax and provide the services that they are paying for to them, not to a select group of people who, maybe it's more economical. Because if you're going to do that, then you need to do it with all the people in the second half of your lines, all over the whole metro area. We here in Oregon City, in our South End area, are roughly 13 miles from Pioneer Square. You have other lines that are even further. Yet we are underserved here in Oregon City. And it sounds like we're going to be even more so underserved. We have population densities that are comparable in many regards with some of these other areas that you're serving better. And if the population density is what controls your payroll income, then I would suggest you take another hard look at how you serve population densities. Metro is pushing more and more density into our community. We have three concept plans under consideration currently here for major urban growth boundary expansion development. To me, as a citizen of this community that has been underserved, continues to be underserved, I think you need to take a hard look at what's going on. I guess I will leave my comments at that. I had a couple others, but I'll forget them. But I would appreciate, if you have a card, Mr. Katz, that you share that with me so that we can be in contact. And I will let you know specifically the date, but I know it's the third Thursday. Thank you.
I think we may have identified an agenda item.
I think so.
And warrants for the discussion with you, but I think it'd be, I think it'd be worth our while if we can find the mechanisms and funding to do it, to look at what some of the other models are.
Well, Mayor, I guess I've done enough research to know that there's probably, a feasibility study is going to be the only way to really get more information about it. I can try to find out what that would cost. I think it kind of depends on how much depth you want to go into. But if the commission is inclined, I'll investigate that and report back.
Well, it might stimulate TRIMET a bit on our side, but like I said, when we saw some of the long-range projections and so forth, Westland and Oregon City did not show additional lines coming in in those pictures. That may be changing, but I think it'd be something that we could look at. Not, I've been a heavy user of TRIMET and I've appreciated those services, but we do feel out here, we're very underserved.
I just have one more, a couple of comments, if you don't mind.
If I did mind, you probably still have a couple of comments.
I probably stood one. You're right, you're right. I think the accident portion is something for us to look at when we're looking at the feasibility study and what to do. I understood that we don't want to be in the transportation business, according to David Fraser, but it's just something that I think we need to come up with a Plan B because we don't know. I mean, I don't know what your union's going to do. I don't know. So, there's a lot of variables, so I just like to have a Plan B. So, I'd like to be proactive about that. And I would actually encourage you, as much as you don't want to, do a rate increase, a fair increase regularly. I don't know how regular you guys have it, but I have always been at the dais since I've been here saying, we need to do at least 3% because costs go up. And people, I mean, you just have to expect that you're going to pay 5% to 10% more every year for your utilities. I mean, bus service is going to go up. It's not going to, gas is not going to, diesel's not going to go down. So, I mean, people have to pay for that. And a question I had for the police chief, safety issues with the MAX line from Milwaukee to Oregon, or from Portland to Milwaukee. What's that look like for Oregon City? Do we expect more crime? I've heard more drugs will be coming.
You know, in terms of what, what, what comes from Milwaukee to here?
Yeah.
I'm not sure that there's a way that I can, I don't know. I do know from other communities, just from other police departments, mostly on the West Side, there are, and the same thing true, obviously at the mall, that what they see, there's, there's definitely a change in the landscape in terms of who, especially light rail brings in. I will say that we have, you may or may not be aware, we have somebody dedicated, TRIMET pays a physician for one of our police officers.
Yes.
One nice thing about that large group is whenever we have had problems or issues down at the transit center, all we need to do is make a phone call and we will have a large number of police officers in marked, marked cars or unmarked cars, and basically high presence and making sure that we quash whatever problem is going on. And they're very, the transit police do a really good job and they're, they're really responsive to that sort of stuff. But in, to your question, light rail ending in Milwaukee, I have no idea what that will change for us. If it ended here in Oregon City, I think that would be a more obvious, more obvious thing. I'd have a better answer.
Okay, that's fine. The other thing is, we don't know how much we pay TRIMET for our service, is that correct? Is that what I heard?
I don't know. I don't know if we.
We can calculate that pretty quickly.
That would be an important thing. I think we need to know what we're paying for the service.
That's not a problem for us to calculate, and that would actually be part of the feasibility, looking at what the revenues are totally. Because we are an employment center.
Yes.
Even though we're not a tax-based center, because we have a lot of exempt properties, that's a different problem. But we do have a lot of employment here. And so, my guess is that our revenues are pretty strong as far as our contribution. But that's something that I would want to verify through that feasibility study. I think TRIMET would probably be helpful in providing some of the information as well. And then we would verify it through our finance department. And, you know, the facts aren't going to be different.
No. The facts are facts.
Choices might be, but the facts should be the same.
But thank you, guys. I'm very happy, this was a very good debate, and I've been very excited to have this conversation with you guys.
Thank you. And we'll look forward to seeing you all in the future, too.
Yes.
Likewise. And we do look forward to the work on the Service Enhancement Plan. We do think that it will actually provide a roadmap to improve service in this area.
Yeah.
And we're looking forward to providing that for you. And if there are other questions that came up in any of the comments, we're certainly happy to follow up at a later point in time.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks much.
Thank you.
And next, we're going to have transparency and open government. I know, I know Nancy Ives been doing a lot of preparation for this effort.
Yeah.
So, we'll flip over to our screens and we'll see your presentation.
Okay.
All righty. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight's presentation will bring you up to date on the next proposed strategic plan for the management of city records. The discussion will also focus on past and current efforts at transparency and open government. To provide you with a little history first, though, just so that you know, in 2007, may have been before some of your time, but maybe some of you would remember, the city commission approved a five-year strategic plan for approved a five-year strategic plan for records management. And the plan was developed for many reasons, but a lot of it was to educate on the value of managing public records, and to provide a framework, framework from which to manage the records from the beginning, from the creation, all the way through their distribution at the end. And at that time, the word, the buzzword, transparency-
Yes.
-wasn't in the works, or it was, it was out there, but it really wasn't the buzzword. And it wasn't very popular. But I have to say that the Recorder's Office was transparent when transparency wasn't cool. Okay. So-
Or at least was the word.
Well, you are the city, you are with the city of birth, so you're the coolest.
That's right. That's right. We understood what transparency was all about, we just weren't using the word.
Uh-huh.
And we were, we were doing the actions. So anyway, the goals and objectives that were developed in 2007 were designed to meet the mission and the values of the Recorder's Office, which are to promote activity that would increase transparency, and to create a secure and easily accessible, efficient system to provide the records for staff, for the public, and for yourselves. So, you've seen a few updates and presentations over the last five years. I've given you a little update, and a little bit of this will be a repetition for you, but maybe not. So, this slide just shows a little bit of the before and after the first strategic planning plan. If you recall, records were stored in a container back in 2007, a couple of them, behind the police department, the old city hall.
Old city hall.
And actually, they were all over the place.
Yes.
There was never, there was no central storage. Storage areas were not climate-controlled, staff was not trained in records management procedures and policies, retention schedules were not being followed. Those are the state-required retention. Our historical records were at risk, and there were inadequate staffing levels. So that's where we began. Today, or after the first plan, the strategic plan was developed, central record storage was designed, we began web streaming videos of public city meetings, retention schedules were implemented, staff was trained in records management procedures. We had three Grateful Shred Days, if you recall those days. Our records liaisons were assigned from, to each department, and they were also trained. We acquired off-site, climate-controlled storage for our paper records. The state-authorized records destruction practices were implemented, and that's through the state retention schedule. And city policies on records management were developed, and the electronic imaging and storage system was implemented. So we, we did quite a bit within a five-year period. You've seen these pictures. I just thought I'd show them again. These are the containers that were being removed. This is what they look like inside.
That's crazy.
It was a mess.
Yeah.
It was a lot of work, and it was a huge team effort of all city employees-
Yeah.
-to bring us to where we are. So just briefly, a few, this was our old, within the city hall there. And this is where we ended up. Excuse me. I'm sorry.
Did you have to input a lot of those records electronically and convert them over, or?
Those that you saw in the containers, most of them were logged, like, these, we, you know, the boxes, some of them were labeled. We, so we had to identify what they were, first of all, and then we had to put them in boxes, label the boxes, log them, and send them off to the, to our off-site record storage facility. So it was a, it was a huge undertaking.
Nancy, can I, I wanted to just say one thing. This morning, I spent a good part of the morning reading a deed, well, actually, it was minutes, from a meeting, Oregon City Commission meeting in 1875. And I got those within a matter of minutes by asking Nancy to get them for me from that.
Yeah.
So it's really hard, it's amazing to look at that picture and think about this morning, saying, "Nancy, can I see this?" Thinking I was asking her to do something that was going to take a week.
Yes.
And literally, in five minutes, I had the, I had the information in front of me. So what a milestone.
And we want to get better.
Yeah.
We, we want to get better even than that, and we want to bring this into the 21st century, and that's why we're here tonight. So anyway, here's our new city hall.
I have to give you credit.
I don't know if you're even aware, but there's a records center here on, onsite.
I have to give you credit. You do have all of the commission now into the 21st century, right?
Yes.
So, yes.
I have to give you credit. That is true. So here at city hall, we do have a, a record storage facility. It's for, for records that are not permanent. We kind of store our permanent ones offsite. And then the ones that we get into frequently, we, we store onsite here. So implementing the plan, go back here first, implementing the plan resulted in the use of a lot of best practices to sustain our records in the decades to come. And good governance and transparency were increased by these efforts, to use those words again. And today, the following functions operate efficiently. So, we met city commission's goal, or we are still meeting the city commission's goal, to increase communications with citizens and facilitate citizen participation via electronic video and media. We went from zero to, to web streaming thirteen different meeting bodies, and maintained the verbatim record of that, of all those meetings. We process hundreds of public records requests each year in a timely manner, and this part's important, according to state laws and city policies. Preliminary plans are underway for a robust management of city electronic records and further access for the public. And of course, now the strategic plan for 2014 to 2018 is in the works. So, that meant that the mission statement needed to be tweaked a little bit. And so here is our new mission statement for the Recorder's Office. It's pretty much the same, but we've just tweaked it a little. So the city Recorder's Office will preserve, maintain, and provide ready access to public records to the citizen, the public servant, and the city commission in an efficient and timely manner, in conformance with all state laws and city policies. Along with the mission statement in, in the plan is a value statement and a vision statement. The strategic plan also includes five goals and many objectives, which are designed to bring the city, again, into the 21st century. So, these are, these are the goals. I'm not going to read them all individually, but I'll just give you a brief summary. Goal number one focuses on educating and implementing records retention procedures and policies. Goal number two focuses on managing electronic records through policies. Goal three focuses on access to our records. Goal four focuses on preservation of our records. And goal five focuses on aligning staff and the technology, utilizing information technology staff, and all their knowledge to meet our goals. Each goal includes several objectives that are designed to meet all these missions and visions and values.
Yeah.
But some of the highlights, and, and as you flip through the plan, there's, there's probably a few dozen different objectives that we're going to try to accomplish over the next five years, but I wanted to give you four highlights. To me, one of the biggest ones is identifying vital records. And even though we kind of know what are, what the important records are, in the event of a citywide disaster, what, what would we need, as far as records are concerned, to start over? And so it's, it's been literally on my mind since the day I walked through these doors. And even though I kind of have it up here, we don't have it, we don't have a plan in place. We have a, we have a disaster plan in place, but, but for our, our vital records?
Right.
What is it, what do we need to start over?
Yeah.
If everything was destroyed?
Yeah.
So that's actually what we're working on right now. Where was I? Another one is to implement an electronic records management system citywide. We have a storage system now, but we don't have a management system, and there's a big difference. We want to expand access to electronic records, to online users through the city's website. So we want, we want to provide more for you. And we want to train staff even further. So there just needs to be more understanding of what we're doing on, on their part. But I wanted to touch just very quickly on this new management system, because it's going, it's going to, and even though a lot of what we're saying here, we don't necessarily need the city commission's approval to, to do these things, because they're more just administrative and, you know, doing business every day kind, kind of things, setting some city policies and, and so forth. But we really like it if you are on board with us, you know, as far as some of our hopes and dreams for records management. I mean, I think you know and understand the value of putting effort into this. So, this new electronic management system, as you can see by the, the slide, in the center there is the system. They use a file cabinet, which is kind of silly, but this is for our electronic records. Records are created and received electronically, over on the left, and records that are created and received in hard copy, and they're all put together and filed and managed in this management system for maintenance and for destruction electronically. And it's all kind of an intuitive system where, once it's all set up, it just sort of begins to flow. So this is the, the new system that we have, are hoping to bring onboard, maybe in, within the next year.
So-
From what you said, you're not getting our 1040 forms, though. Going by that picture there, you don't get our 1040 forms, right?
No.
Okay, good.
No, no, no.
Oh, the picture right there has it.
NSA's got those.
So, well, so have you done away with all the file boxes, and everything created and received in hard copy or scanned, and then put into electronically and filed that way?
Well, eventually, that's, that's the hope. The, the state, still at this point, they haven't quite changed the law, but they're just about to, that where the, the permanent document cannot be kept as an electronic record, it has to be kept in its original form, whether it's paper. They do allow you to put it on microfilm from the 50s.
Microfiche?
Yeah.
You might want to go, you might want to go to, what, the state, or-
Yeah, right.
Washington DC and do some lobbying.
But actually, that, that law is in the process of being changed. Our state archivist has been working. And, and she was the one who developed this new system, and then made some pilot programs, had several cities come onboard as a pilot city. We decided not to do that. We wanted to just sit back and watch it, and see what would happen, how, if, and, and they've been very successful, and cities are liking it. So it's kind of the direction that we, it looks like we might be headed. So, I'm not going to go over this whole thing, but this electronic records management system can do all these different things for us, from, like, the third one, automatically and intuitively retaining all necessary records. It dramatically increases the number of records that are available to the public. It will reduce the number of servers that are required to be maintained by our IT staff, so we don't have to replace all those, that expensive servers and so forth. Those costs will go down. It reduces litigation risk and e-discovery costs, because if, you know, like the city manager just gave the example of finding some, some minutes from 1875, you, the, the robust search capability, you just put something in that field, and, you know, it instantly comes up with everything on the Cove project, or whatever it is that you, you want to bring up.
That's nice.
Yeah.
Have we been doing that since 1875?
Yeah. It's been a long-
So, anyway, that is kind of it in a nutshell. The, the plan is all there. It's, it's pretty simple, what we want to do. The, the objectives are all clearly identified, and we're very, at least I'm very excited about moving forward over the next five years with that. So I don't know if you have any specific questions, if there's something more you want to look, look over, or, we are making our, moving forward our transparency efforts, and we're very happy to do that.
I think it's great. I completely support that, as being a paperwork person myself, so, good job.
Yeah, I wanted to thank you for all your tremendous work that you have done. I recall before, before we had Clarkland Fire District One providing the services, the upper floor of the fire station over here had all those boxes of records all over the place, so, and when, when I came here, we had a city recorder was extremely rapid typer.
Yes.
Very accurate, but when that recorder got documents from other places that could be copied and attached, would we type all those documents as well? So I think we've, we've advanced a great deal, and, and I thank you for all your tremendous work, Nancy.
You're welcome.
And it's a, it's a team effort, let me tell you, in getting all this done, so.
Thank you. I believe, yes, do I have somebody on?
Betty.
Betty, come.
On the floor.
Yes, I'll get on the floor.
Go ahead, Betty. Oh, I see what I'm doing here.
Okay. Yes, I really appreciate what you and your little tiny staff are doing, Nancy. You guys are doing, you're dynamite team. So it's great work. My question is, last night's CIC meeting, I went to look at that on, on the computer, but it wasn't there, on the website? So like, can you walk me through, like, what does that look like? After this meeting, what, what kind of work do you guys do to get that on the computer and to the Willamette Falls Media Center?
Okay.
Because I know it's not as easy as I think it is.
Let me show you. So let me just bring this up.
Oh, it's in, it's on your page, right? City Recorder's page?
No. If you go, this is our homepage.
Yes.
And this is where you go to, to the meetings page.
Yes.
And, and we have to manually put them in over here, okay? But if you go home that night, and you want to see it that night, before we get there the next morning and put it up, you can go here to this, to live video.
So I can watch it that night?
Yeah, and actually, this meeting that's taking place right now, if I clicked View Event, we could see this right now.
Oh. Let's do it.
Let's do it.
But it's under the CIC meeting.
And then when you get home, you can do it again.
Under that.
I, I don't like it, because I'm never impressed by me when I see it on the screen, and when I send it back here, so I just, I don't like to go back and look at them at all.
It's right, it's right there.
Okay, so the video is there now?
Go to the meetings page, and then to live video.
Okay.
Yeah, it's there instantly.
It is.
Or like thirty minutes later, because it takes time to upload.
Okay.
So that's where you would go, if you go home that night.
Okay.
The next day, though, it should be up on the other page.
On the other page?
Yes.
And can you show us that for the viewing audience?
Yes, it is.
Because I love to show off our webpage.
Okay. I can get back to it.
We have a great website.
So just right here, agendas and minutes. And this is our meetings page. This is in progress. This is our meeting tonight.
Look at that, we're in progress.
And then the CIC meeting, I don't, for some reason, it didn't get put up today. So we had other things going on. But you can see, they're, they're put up right here.
That's where I was.
Okay.
But normally, it's really-
I don't know why that didn't get put up today.
Normally, it's like done right away.
Yeah, the, the next day, it's, it's put up.
Gotcha.
Yes. But if you want it the night before, I just showed you, go to this live-
To do that way, the night before.
Live video right here, and you'll find it there.
Yeah, the night before. Otherwise, we wait until you put it down there.
Right, that's right.
Okay. Public records requests, how many do we get, and what are we charging?
In it, well, in a year's time, that, a lot of them come in electronically, and we just do them all electronically. And some come by, by paper, so, you know, the, the numbers fluctuate, but it's between, like, $250 and $300 a year, as far as-
Requests.
Right.
Okay.
So, you know, if, how many workdays are there a year, you know? We're doing, we're doing many.
So, one person-
Three hundred a year.
One person puts in a request for ten pages or something, then is that considered part of the $250, $300?
They're each request. Each request is, counts as one.
Okay.
And then we have, we have a public records request policy that we follow.
Yes.
And the policy requires us to respond within five days. It's rare that we, we don't-
Okay.
Within, and when we need more time, for whatever reason, then we just contact the requister and let them know, but, and our, and our fees are according to, if you go online, or I could send you the records request, it just depends on the cost of the copies.
Okay.
If the first half hour of staff time is free, anything over that, we, we charge according to the, the salary plus benefits of whoever is doing the request.
Well, the reason why I'm saying this is because I had the golden opportunity to go to the courthouse on Main Street and pay a big chunk of- go to the courthouse on Main Street and pay a big chunk of change. $25 a page, 25 cents a page for copies.
Okay.
Might be easier just to go with one lump sum and?
Oh, well, ours are according to page as well. It's actually 50 cents for the first page, and then if it's after 20 pages, it goes down less, so.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
But yeah, it's down to 15 cents a page if you're doing over 50 or something like that. And then, of course, there's copies if they need a copy of a DVD or, you know, there's other fees associated with that.
I'm like, oh, my God, 25 cents a page. What are we charging? I hope we're charging enough.
The state statutes also allow for cities to make choices on what they want to charge, you know, reasonable costs to provide the records. And I would think that our public would not want, they would want us to recoup the costs.
Right.
That we are expending to provide the service to the customers.
Yeah, no, I totally agree. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Roth?
Are we considered paperless in that everything that's happening now is electronically recorded, and so if you've got, we've got a disaster, everything's somewhere?
In the clouds.
All of the, all of the City Commission and our boards and committees' documents, you know, that you see online on that meetings page, those, all those agendas and those packets, that's all electronic, of course. But because the law has not changed yet and agendas and minutes and so forth, those are similar, those are the documents that are permanent record, and so we have to keep those in paper. So we always have a hard copy that we keep and we ship it off to our off-site storage.
But other, other documents other than just committees, like deeds and, I don't know, permits or whatever?
We, anything that's permanent, we have to keep in its original format. So, you know, the day is going to come when they're going to allow us to take permanent records and make them electronic and then keep that electronically, and then we can get rid of that paper. Some, some records are historical in nature, and we don't want to get rid of them because, you know, some of the, some of those minutes from the 1800, you know, 1850?
Yeah.
I mean, if you look at them, they're just, you know, you don't even want to touch them, you feel like they're going to fall apart.
Yeah.
But you don't, you know, we don't, we wouldn't get rid of those. Those are really historical records. And one of our, one of our objectives in this plan is to learn more about preservation and hope that we can, you know, learn how to preserve those in an even, an even better way.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because we have an entire half of a floor of people that are scanning old permit records, and they're those old library catalog drawers, you know, that?
Oh, yeah.
And they're scanning all of that stuff into electronics.
Yeah, they're probably wanting to get rid of the paper because a lot of them are not permanent.
So those are allowed to go to electronic?
Yeah, anything that's not a permanent record.
Okay.
If you have, if you have migratory policies in place, and that's one of the things that we did in the last few years was get the right policies in place so that we know that if, you know, like going from a cassette tape to a CD to a, what's next? You know, that you're, we're migrating the records appropriately so we don't lose them.
Okay, and then my last question is, will, you said that there will be much more access for public to be, to get into the records. That will dramatically increase, you said. So will there be less call for public records?
Probably.
Yeah.
I don't ever get record, records requests for agenda packets or minutes or ordinances or resolutions. I mean, it's very rare.
Anything that's already on there, you don't get it.
Because people are using the system.
Good, okay.
That's great. You know, I just had one thought when you were asking about that. You said you send it to your off-site storage. Is that, that site, if we had a true disaster in Oregon City, would that site that you send them to, is that like in Washington or, you know?
In Tuolton.
Iron Mountain?
Yeah, no, it's Recall. And yeah, it's in Tuolton.
So if we have a disaster, we hope it doesn't go to Tuolton?
Yeah, but you have to remember that we've been, I've been planning for this, the law to change for a long time. And I always said, I'm going to be more than ready, when they finally change the law, I'm going to say, well, we've been doing that forever anyway.
I love it.
So, you know, we are electronic.
Yes.
You know, if we lost the paper, we still have the electronic.
As long as you can get to your electronics.
Right. The new system that we're hoping to get is actually in the cloud system, and it's based in Bakersfield. So, and they're, I've been there and I've seen it, and they, it's an absolutely amazing facility. There's no way on the earth hardly that anything could happen to those records, so. Anyway, that's for another day.
This is great.
It's always good to have another backup facility, though.
Yes.
Thank you. I'll try to be brief. My name is William Gifford. I live in Oregon City. I'm missing my Neighborhood Association meeting to listen to this. First of all, I wish that there was more citizens in the audience because I would certainly suggest a standing ovation for City Recorder's work.
Yes, absolutely.
It's a team.
Well, your team is phenomenal.
They're all amazing.
Absolutely phenomenal, and I think that we have possibly one of the most transparent governments in the entire state, and I am just honored that we have your services, and I appreciate them. Regarding the comments about the website, which is another phenomenal piece of this great city is our website, and I was just recently made aware of apparently a survey that was done by West Lynn as to where citizens get their information. The majority of all citizens get their information from their website, from the city's website, more than, more than just about any other source. So it's a good thing if we want an informed electorate, let's keep up the good work on the website. Regarding comments about historical records and eventually maybe we won't need to keep hard copies of them, I have to point out, just like the composer's workbook on all classical records says, remember all music was at one time new. Well, at some time, all current records are going to be historic, and although we might, we might look at an 1875 record and say, wow, that's really old. Well, you know, in the year 3000.
You're right.
If somebody could see a document from 2014, it's like, wow, that's really historic. So all things eventually will be historic if they are, if they're around. And I had the honor many, many years ago of going through the state archives in Salem, and it was pretty interesting because you could see the current stuff all in electronic format, you know, and then with microfiche, you know, and it was on, on the green scan lines of the computer things with the pinholes on the side, and then it went back into typed ledger books, and then it went to these leather-bound handwritten minutes of the state legislature. Just, it's really just walking back in time, and I was thinking about going forward, maybe someday we'll walk into a holograph, you know, and be able to sit in the very room where decisions are being made.
Yeah.
Ultimate transparency. I had, I had one gentle suggestion to this whole process, and I'd certainly just ask for you to consider it. I don't know if we'll ever really consider this finished, this process of converting all of our records for total transparency, but I would want the, I would want us to consider it as a policy to have an annual audit, a procedural audit, an external audit, have an outsider come in and say, this is what we think we are doing. Does it look like we're doing what we're doing? I know that's one of the qualifications for LEED certification, for example. It's one thing, yeah, we follow all the LEED certification, but part of the LEED certification is verifying that although you say you have this percentage of inflow or outflow, having an outside person come and certify that it's being done really, really nails it to the wall. And I don't think it'd be a bad idea for us to periodically, at least, have an audit of our systems. Are they working the way we think that they are? Just from an external perspective.
Be interesting.
Yes.
Yes.
I made a comment earlier that I, I hope we have a backup system because electronic records can be destroyed as well.
Right.
And so.
And we do.
Well, I see nobody else, so I'll turn to the city manager.
One more thing, I was just wondering if we can move this forward to the consent agenda for your approval then on the 15th?
Sure.
Yep, okay. All righty, thank you.
If somebody wants to talk about it more, they can pull it.
Right.
With that, our city manager.
While Nancy's on a roll, first thing on my report tonight is to ask Nancy to introduce you to the transparency webpage that's on the city's homepage.
Oh, I love it. What does transparency mean to you?
Bring this up. Okay. Okay, so just very briefly, this is a new page that has been added, I'm sorry, where did it go? Oh, yeah, here it is. It's a new page that's been added to the city's website. It's to further inform the public of the city's transparency efforts and its focus on open government. And the page was designed using input from every department and in response to the city's, City Commission's goal to maintain communications with citizens and facilitate the participation. It details how each department reaches out to the community from its unique perspective. So for instance, just as an example, Public Works has efforts to bring project information to communities via their Neighborhood Association, meetings, through press releases, direct mailings, brochures, you know, all these different ways that they communicate with the public. Community developments efforts include hosting open houses, community conversations, concept plan committees, and, you know, it goes on and on and on. There's a lot of information here, so it, I don't even know what more to do other than just to recommend you go visit the page. Every department is listed here and has all kinds of links that takes you to different places that will show you even further how much we are working toward even more transparency. And again, you can find it just directly from the homepage.
This is a great page.
Yes.
It has everything in one place where people can see, you know, how to get there and where it's located. This is great.
Thank you. That's the purpose.
Thank you, Nancy.
Where you got that off the homepage, Nancy?
Sure, I will.
And people that aren't necessarily good at navigating through websites, that's a great place to start.
It's going to be on the homepage for a while. It's actually, right now, it's in this, right there.
But where will it be?
Yeah, and then it's going to be over here. I'll have to figure that out yet. I'll let, I'll let you know.
Okay, okay.
Just got that. And then over here, under the latest news, actually, you could go to view all news and you could still find it there.
Oh, okay, good. Yeah, I think it's important for our citizens to have that opportunity.
Do you want to share with our Neighborhood Association?
You bet.
Yes.
So I want to thank Nancy for that, and also every one of our departments on our executive team meetings, we've been talking about this actually for several weeks. So it's timely, a good way to start the new year. I just want to thank Nancy, you, and the staff for your efforts on that. Next, also, I want to, Maureen Cole wants to make an announcement about a library event
Hello. I just wanted to remind you that an awesome author is going to be at the library this Thursday, Amanda Copeland. She wrote The Orchardist, and she was just named as one of the finalists for the Ken Keasy Fiction Award at the Oregon Book Awards. So she is truly very wonderful, and we also have more author events coming up at the end of January, Phil Margolin and Greg Noakes at Atkinson Church, which will be really, really cool. And Greg Noakes is also on the list of finalists for the Oregon Book Award. And let's see, next week is How to Keep Chickens.
And what, what time is the?
Chickens.
What time is the author?
Seven, at the library, this Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, I want to remind the commissioners and the community that Tiffany Carbonow, the artist that's working on the elevator project. We call it Illuminate Oregon City, and it's a collaboration really between Main Street Oregon City, Clackamas County Arts Alliance, in partnership with the city metro and Portland State University on January 22nd at 6:30. And essentially what they're going to do, we're going to close some of our streets and have increased law enforcement there for security, and going to have sort of a street party to celebrate the.
Oh, I love that.
Illumination of the elevator. We're inviting people, encouraging people to come, make a night of it, bring your family, eat out, have a refreshing beverage or whatever else you want to do, and make sure you see the elevator come to life. And we're keeping our fingers crossed that everything works when the switch gets thrown and.
Everything will.
So I don't know. I'm not an electrician. I know what happened on the, remember the waterfall? We had a few glitches, but I'm hoping that everything goes smoothly. And Main Street Oregon City has a press release they asked me to hand out tonight, so I will do that as well. And then I saved the best for last. This afternoon, about an hour before the council meeting started, I signed the Cove DDA.
Woo!
That's why you were looking for the record.
I don't, I don't know when they started excavating gravel from there, but. So, so far, I have signed it.
That's why you wanted the minutes, right?
Voljanic has signed it, and we're expecting Ed Dower to come in on Friday, I believe, Friday afternoon and sign it. So then all the signatories will be on the document. It'll be in final form, so. It, as you know from reading it yourselves, there's, and I think Eric has read it more than any of us, there are a number of things that triggers a whole sequence of events and a lot of staff monitoring, and so Eric's going to be, Eric and Tony and I basically are going to try to keep us on track for all of the different triggers that are in that project because there are many. And there are many for both sides. Actually, the developer has the number of triggers they have to hit, we have a number we have to hit. So while we're relieved to have the document signed, we know that we've just made ourselves a whole lot of new work, but we're hoping for a really successful project in the end. And that's all I have this evening.